Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June 9, 2014 Board of Education meeting. We have some special guests here today that I've asked to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You're from Guilford Lake School, I understand. I would like to ask you now, please, to go ahead and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Thank you very much, boys and girls. Now, first, with the board's permission, I'm going to move one of the items on the agenda under the superintendent's presentation is item 7.3, which is a presentation by the Guilford Lake Student Green Patrol. With the board's consent, I'd like to move that up to this point in the agenda. So I would ask...
I'm happy to. I am happy to introduce Mrs. Jill Hale, the principal of Lakes Elementary School, and Mrs. Pam Medvecky, and Susan Ireland, who I know are leaders of the Green Team. We are happy to bring this presentation to the Board of Education tonight.
Mrs. Maurer and Mrs. Ward are also here, working with them. But this is just a portion of the Green Team. Under Pam Medvecky's guidance, we have a very strong Green Team. We recycle. Come visit our cafeteria. We recycle just about everything, and we have student representatives in every classroom that bring the recycling from the classrooms down to the bins in the cafeteria. And they, we have a zero-waste week where they focus on school lunch and having zero waste. And I'll let them tell you what they learned during that week.
Hi, I'm Pam Medvecky, and I just want to thank you for giving us the time tonight, to giving the time for these kids to come and speak. I'm very proud of this group of kids. They have done so much. They're so passionate about doing great things for the earth, and I don't want to take their time. So, without further ado, the late-night edition of the Green Patrol.
Hi, my name is Richard Russo. I'm a 4th grader at Guilford Lakes Elementary School. I serve as a representative on the Guilford Lakes Student Green Patrol because I care about our earth. Green Patrol kids work with Green Team adults to try to make Guilford Lakes greener since we began. A lot more kids are stopping to think before they toss. Since Green Patrol students started collecting foil snack bar wrappers and bags from snack and taking them to special collecting bins in the cafeteria, twice as many wrappers and bags have been saved from the trash. More water bottles have been redeemed, too. We also help our adult Green Team to keep other things that can't be recycled out of the trash: juice pouches, bottle caps, glue sticks, and printer cartridges. With the foil wrappers, those sent to a company called Tree Cycle to be made into new things and creates rest trash and earns money for our school. Instead of old day, Guilford Lakes had zero trash mark. Green Patrol made posters and tried to get every student to make zero trash. We stood by the trash and recycling cans to make sure everything was sorted right. Kids got really into it. Lots of kids made zero trash at least one day, and some did it all week and are still doing it. We put Styrofoam lunch trays in separate barrels since the trays were trash that kids couldn't help. It was frustrating to see, to try so hard for zero trash and see so many big bags of trash filled with just foil trays. At our next meeting, we talked as a group and decided that we wanted to help get reusable or recyclable trays that we can feel good about. We wrote those to Dr. Freeman that we are delivering tonight. I am here tonight speaking of the 31 representatives of the Guilford Green Patrol who couldn't make it tonight. I am here because the students at Guilford Lakes believe in zero trash. We don't like having to put 600 trays in landfill just because we want to buy lunch this week. We think we should stop talking about money and start talking about the earth.
Hello, my name is Jack Rosmussen, and I'm in the 2nd grade. Guilford schools use 200,000 styrofoam trays per year. I would feel better using eating my lunch off a non-toxic reusable option than from
I am Vanessa Munoz, and I am a 4th grader. Each tray is used by one student for about 20 minutes. Each tray takes at least 500 years to break down, if at all. To me, eating lunch from a tray that takes so long to turn to dirt is like letting garbage take over the world.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Maurer, and I am in 2nd grade. I learned at school this year about being a bucket filler. Bucket filling means doing something nice for someone. Everything we do either fills a bucket or empties it. Using styrofoam trays empties my bucket. It makes me feel bad. I think if the earth has a bucket, it must get emptier every time I throw out styrofoam trays. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Owen Medvecky, and I'm in 2nd grade. Styrofoam trays and soup bowls contain styrene, which has been identified as a probable carcinogen. Styrene has been shown to leach out of styrofoam food containers when holding heated food. We stay home from school when we have a fever. We went on our school to make healthy choices, too.
I'm Christina Lachance, and I am in 4th grade. Styrofoam is a major cause of ocean pollution. We care about eating lunch, but we also love living in a world with dolphins. I was just at a marine mammal rescue center, and I saw how this pollution hurts seals, whales, and other sea life.
My name is Cassie Ward. I am in 1st grade. We learned that McDonald's stopped using foam burger boxes about 20 years ago. We think styrofoam trays belong in a museum with other things from the past.
Hello, my name is Morgan Dickinson. I am in 3rd grade, and our teachers give us challenges, challenging problems to solve. Here's one to solve. Together, more schools, big and small, are finding ways to stop using styrofoam trays. Some districts join together to pay less for recyclable trays. Some partner with a local farm to use compostable trays.
I'm Amanda Wong, and I'm in 3rd grade. More schools pay for greener trays by recycling more and decreasing trash costs. Others buy washable trays and new water-saving dishwashers. Many schools use recyclable paper boats any day the food isn't messy.
I'm Ellie Winesmore, and I'm a 3rd grader. Guilford students don't want to litter landfills with 200,000 more foam trays next year. We don't want to leave 2.6 million trays during our school years for kids in the future to trip over. Please think about what is best for Guilford kids and for our earth, and get rid of styrofoam lunch trays in Guilford.
I'm Isabel Ireland. I am in 3rd grade. As a thank you, we brought one of our "It's Easy Being Green" bracelets for each of you. They're kid-sized, so you'll probably have to give them to someone smaller. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us. We want to make a difference. We really need your help.
My name is Georgia Pierce, and I would like to give Dr. Freeman...
Say it again.
My name is Georgia Pierce, and I would like to give Dr. Freeman our Green Patrol letters.
They make a great presentation, don't they? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Will anyone else need a stool tonight? Thank you. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of the board, I want to thank the members of the Green Team and their advisors, and also, obviously, their parents. You've got a lot to be proud of. I think I can speak for the board that we will take the suggestion very much into account. And I...
It's a compelling presentation.
Well, you know, and it sounds like it's a good idea, frankly. I know that I'm going to predict that the tenant will say, "I'd like to get some data and see." But I think that sometimes, sometimes grown-ups need a little bit of a reminder about who we are really working for and who the world that we're going to give them. So I hope we can look at this very, very carefully and...
I'm going to look forward to reporting back to you.
Yeah. Terrific. Does anybody have questions or comments, thoughts on...
It was great.
Just in Queens, or are we using styrofoam at all of the schools now? Or do we know? I don't know.
I'm going to have to get back to you and give you a more full report.
That's correct.
I'm sure there's a lot of questions.
This is one of these areas where maybe there are cost components that don't get fully factored into the number.
Absolutely.
And I think I heard a young presenter say, "Stop talking about money and start talking about what's important." So I will only say again that we look forward to reporting back to you. I want to see what you guys have for tonight.
Well, you had mentioned that in our June workshop, the Director of Food Services will be meeting with us, so that could be on the agenda for her to talk about.
I think we could absolutely at least continue the conversation. We should be able to continue the conversation at that time.
Terrific. Well, good. Maybe we can report something further in July or August at the latest. So, again, thank the members of the community and the parents. Let's go back to the regular agenda, then. Item 3 on the agenda is take action on the May 12th and May 27 minutes. Everybody got those? Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections, changes, additions, clarifications?
If I may, on page 5...
Of the regular meeting?
I'm sorry, of the regular meeting minutes on May 12th. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, maybe 7 down. This is not huge, but I would just like to add, it says, "Dr. Ballast Tracy commented that." I would like to add, "In lieu of field testing, the board must rely on the expertise of..." and leave the same, just to clarify what that was in response to.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Where are the motions?
Aye.
All right. Item 4 on the agenda, Mr. Sands, you presented the expenditures at the finance committee meeting.
I did. And we reviewed several items. But let me give you an overall report. The expenditures for the month were $5,566,686.78. Through the end of May, expenditures and encumbrances are 81.02% of the budget as compared to 81.12% in the previous year. So we're right on track. The items that make up the component were basically also tracking. The salaries were right on budget. The benefits were approximately on budget. The purchased services were higher than last year, but that was accounted for by higher equipment purchases, particularly some of the technologies purchases, and some bulk supply purchases, which will carry over for multiple months. So I think that if you take those two factors into account, we'd be about right. The tuition payments were lower than the prior year but on budget, and supplies and materials were lower than the previous year. Capital is a little higher. That was primarily due to early spending on some site improvements. We've got some playgrounds that are going to be redone, and we got an early jump on some of that. The transportation is higher than last year. We had some increase in usage. So, overall, we're on budget, and it looks like we should be fine for the last month of the year.
Okay. Great. The specific expenditures, I'm sure, were reviewed in the operations committee meeting. So is there a motion to approve the expenditures for the month of May?
So moved.
Second? Okay. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Recused.
Recused? Okay. Let me again move things a little bit out of order and just go to item 6, the student representatives. Do you have a report tonight, or just kind of a wind-down?
Yeah, we got one.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and do that?
Well, it's the end of the year at the high school, so everything's really starting to wind down, and everyone's kind of getting excited for summer. So the end-of-year preparations have begun. Graduation's still on the 19th on the green, as we all know. Spring sports are, for the most part, done, except for Gabby, who's still running, as she did today before she came here.
Today was my last meet, so I think they're pretty much all done.
Yeah, they're over now. And then prom was on Friday at the aqua turf, and that was a really fun, really memorable night. That was really enjoyable. Seniors have taken their trips to Holiday Hill, and we also had our senior breakfast, two very fun, memorable things as well. And last but not least, finals are coming up, the end of this week, beginning of next week, and then after that, that's all. That's all she wrote.
At Guilford Lakes, they've been having a lot of fun field trips this past month. The 4th graders had early Guilford Day, which I know happens at all the schools as well, but this is just my Guilford Lakes report. And that's where they participate in a lot of activities that correspond to colonial times, like they dress in old-fashioned clothing, play old games, and other things. And then the 3rd grade had a geology field trip. 2nd grade classes had a trip where they toured the town green. And also, as the year comes to a close, I wanted to talk about their new hands-on science program that was a new school-wide thing this year called E-Smarts, and it was a huge success, so they plan to continue it next year.
At AW Cox, they just had their last circle of friends meeting, which promotes kindness, respect, friendship, cooperation. The 4th graders also had their Colonial Day field trip, and the 3rd graders worked on a professional to learn the craft of storytelling. And they're also just having fun days, field day, as the school year winds down.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Questions? Comments? Well, I know there are two of you who are seniors, so this is our last meeting with you, and we do have, to call it a small token of our appreciation, is to overstate it, frankly, because it's very small, but if you would please just join me at the podium. On behalf of the board, Gabrielle, I want to thank you for everything that you've done with us. You've given us great ideas and great feedback on what's been happening at the high school. Appreciate deeply all of your comments and all of your insight, and I wish you luck in your career and education, but you're not going to need it. You are a star. Mr. Mazzini speaks highly of everything that you've done, and so I want to thank you and hope that we see you again.
Thank you.
And Fred Trata, I have to call you Freddie, as you were when this all started. Now it's all winding down, as you say. But on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you so much for participating as a student representative. Your insights were extremely valuable to us, as we try to always remember what it's about, which is you guys. So we'll see you on the 19th on the green, and best of luck with everything.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. We all enjoyed your reports. Did a good job.
See you guys next year.
All right. Well, let's go back. Maybe we can do the rest of the meeting in order. What do you think?
Yeah. Five.
Right. Five, Public Forum for Topics on the Board Agenda. Does anybody want to make any comments at this point?
Good morning.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening.
I'm sorry? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Mill. I just have a few prepared remarks, and it'll be quick, I promise. I'm here tonight to provide feedback on the last Common Core forum and to suggest changes in that format for the next forum. The main message I would like to convey is that I experienced the meeting less as a discussion between the school system and parents, and more as a presentation from some very nice, thoughtful teachers, along with Mrs. Carrery, about the Common Core. After a year of experiencing the implementation of the Common Core here in Guilford, we are hoping that this forum would provide more of a chance to voice our ongoing questions and concerns about the implementation. Instead of a discussion, what we experienced felt more like a sales pitch for decisions that had been made throughout the school system. I want to stress that, at least for our part, I'm speaking for my husband and myself, that we do not feel that there is a need for a debate about the merits of the Common Core as a set of goals. In any case, this is not a question that will be decided in Guilford. However, we, as a school system, do get to decide on matters of how we teach our children in order to meet the what of the standards mandated by the state. The issue of exactly how the Common Core standards are being implemented here in Guilford is very much on our minds, and was evidently on the minds of other parents at the last forum. While we heard from a few teachers of how they view the Common Core and how they've experienced its rollout this year, there was little time for the administration and the teachers there to hear how the rollout is being experienced by the parents and their children. We, and many of the other parents we know attending the meeting, came away deeply frustrated by the sense that our concerns and questions simply were not given the time to be heard and thoughtfully addressed. I wouldn't be here if I had not been hearing the same concerns expressed by many other parents about what's going on. I hope the board and the administration recognize that the number of parents who show up to voice their concerns at these meetings is inevitably only a tiny fraction of those who are, in fact, unhappy with some of the recent changes. Some have very young children and have difficulty making it to these meetings. Some are afraid of sticking their neck out, and others don't want to waste their time expressing their concerns due to a sense that doing so is unlikely to lead to any real changes. At any rate, I am here primarily to ask the board that they schedule another forum on the Common Core, but this time with the explicit goal to hear from parents about their questions and concerns with the ongoing implementation here in Guilford. We hope that the board and the administration recognize that many families and students are experiencing what feel like fundamental changes in emphasis and approach to pedagogy in addition to the state mandated changes in goals. While it is natural for the school system to emphasize the positive outcomes from the changes, as we have heard about at length in the last forum, there are surely also areas where the new approaches are not working out as anticipated. We also feel strongly that we, as parents, can bring insights into how the changes are impacting our children, which might be missed by the teachers and administrators, but only if there is sufficient time for our comments and questions to be heard. As parents, we would also find it extremely helpful to hear about examples from teachers and the administrations about things that have been found not to work, and how they have been or will be addressed. More generally, what we would like to emphasize is a problem-solving approach, where both successes and difficulties are addressed, and the voices of all concerned groups are heard. And that we think that that will be needed to build trust in the community for the deep changes that are apparently underway.
Yeah. And we're going to talk about this, obviously, a little bit later, generally, but we did commit to doing another forum over the summer, and we did that at the meeting. So that's still on track.
Yes. I just wanted to give some input onto what, at least my little family, what we felt how it should run.
Okay. That's fair. We can, we'll talk about that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Other comment, public comments for items on the board agenda?
I wanted to comment as well. My name is Paul Bauer on the Common Core forum that was held two weeks ago. The forum was requested by parents and was initially described as an opportunity for parents to express concerns and ask questions about Guilford's implementation of the Common Core. The language here is important, because, as we know, the Common Core is a national initiative adopted by the states but implemented locally here in Guilford. At least for me, it is the implementation that I have concerns about. However, as we just heard, instead of hearing and responding to our concerns, the administration created a format in which more than half of the allotted time was occupied with a panel presentation from five teachers and specialists who presented their views on how the Common Core may improve education. While the teachers presented a positive perspective on how the Common Core might improve teaching and learning, they did not, they are not the administrators who are determining the nature and the extent of that implementation here in Guilford. They are not the ones who can answer questions about potentially negative consequences of a rigid and strict interpretation, as we have here. Their views were not even representative of the range of opinions among teachers. In fact, the arrangement of the forum itself was an example of what seems to be a growing pattern of two behaviors when it comes to concerns about the Common Core rollout. The first is that the administration drives change, the teachers roll out the change, and when parents question the change, the administration puts the teachers between the parents and the decision-makers. Not only is this questionable leadership, it can create an unhealthy relationship between parents and their children's teachers. And of the dozens of parents and teachers who have told me that they are unhappy with the current reforms here in Guilford, not one of them thinks the teachers are responsible. The second behavior that was on display is the direct contradiction of what parents see in the classroom or are told happens in the classroom, or what teachers report they must now do or are no longer allowed to do versus what the administration presents to the board and to the public. This was made very clear by the attempts to nuance the reality that our elementary students receive very little direct instruction in areas like grammar and spelling, and that our children will spend gym time writing, art time reading, and music time on activities that can be made to align with the LA standards. This is not to mention the all but elimination of direct lessons, direct lessons, in science, social studies, geography, grammar, spelling, civics, and culture from the K through 4 curriculum. Again, while we here in Guilford are not in control of what's in the Common Core, we are in control of how we craft our school days to meet those requirements. In the future, I would respectfully ask and hope for a few administrative changes when it comes to managing the implementation of the Common Core and reform initiatives. First, I would hope the administration can adopt a more inclusive position when it comes to informing the board and the public of current views regarding reform. Second, I would hope the administration can apply a little more objectivity and a little less nuance when answering yes-no questions. And third, I would hope to see a little more wisdom and temperance and a little less ideology when deciding exactly how to best reform Guilford schools. I realize some of these comments may be a bit pointed. I do not offer them lightly. I understand the administration will disagree with some of these observations, but I offer them not because I expect the opinion of one parent to weigh that heavily, but because my perception is informed by conversations with dozens of parents and dozens of teachers across all four levels of our schools, who have each expressed serious concerns about the content and the exclusions of our current curriculum. As a recipient of this information, I feel some level of responsibility to speak up publicly. If further explanation or clarification would be of service to the board or the administration, I would be happy to provide it.
Again, I think we'll, I'm sure you want to comment on some of those observations. I do want to say one thing, though. If there are parents or anybody else in the community that is concerned about the implementation of the Common Core, then I think that there, I think we would all, from the board, like to hear from you, because, I've got to be honest, I'm not hearing from a lot of people. And it's a little, it's hard for us to have a real assessment about the level of concern on some of these issues if we don't hear from people. And, I mean, I don't know how, what everybody else's experience is, but I'm not getting a lot of communications on it. But, you know, I would like to, I would certainly like to get them on either direction, frankly, and people that like some of the changes and people that have suggestions. Either one is fine. I think they're both helpful.
There's a lot of face-to-face communications, and, you know, you can't always tell the tale, but, you know, you walk into the grocery store, you talk to people, you talk to people at birthday parties, you know, there's a lot... at birthday parties, you know, there's a lot of, it's, everyone's talking about it. So while we're unfortunately not getting letters and parents coming to the meetings, I don't think it's appropriate to assume that people are disinterested.
My comment, my observation was, I mean, I go to the grocery store too. I'm not, nobody's pulling on, I just, all I'm saying is that I think if there are concerns, I'd like to hear from people. That's all I'm saying. I think we all would like to hear from people. Please, come on up.
Hi, I'm Duffy Madri, and I was at the meeting as well for the Common Core, and I just want to a little bit reiterate what they said, but I just left there definitely feeling like we needed another one. And while it was interesting to hear the teachers' perspectives, there was definitely not enough time for questions, and I feel like people left fairly dissatisfied. There were many questions about the curriculum, including math, language arts, and science that were answered sort of vaguely, and I just feel that parents do need more time for discussion. The Common Core state standards is a big change for all of us, for teachers, staff, students, and parents. And it's hard. It's scary. Change is scary for everyone. And we're all hoping that it's a positive experience, and we're hoping that it's going to be the best movement in education ever, but we don't know, and obviously, we don't really have a choice in the matter. Connecticut's doing it. It's happening. But I do feel like the strands can be taught in many ways, and that's how we can sort of come together as a community. I think, I know teachers have concerns about this too. So we just want our teachers to hear our concerns, address them, come up with the best way to teach our kids, which I know they can do. And also, the other thing, the positive thing about this, I do think is that we are talking about education again. Like Amy said, you know, you go to the grocery store, we, I've talked about the Common Core with parents, and it's, it is unfortunate that you haven't gotten a lot of feedback about it, but I talk to parents every day about it, whether it's, you know, at playgroups or birthday parties or the grocery store, soccer, it's, it's, it's what people are really talking about, and I do think that's good because, you know, when we were little, you know, my mom put me on the bus and I came home, and I don't think there was any ever much question about education, and, and we're all talking about it, and I think that's a great thing, but I think our concerns do need to be addressed. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. I didn't write anything down, so I may ramble, but in terms of this, this balances my professional life, I'm trained as an educational psychologist, and my personal life. And so I know how challenging, I'm deeply embedded in the Common Core every day in my world. I know the curriculum is not there, even we say the Common Core does, we do not have the curriculum, we do not have the professional development. I don't get, I know, I think most people agree with the standards, but I think it's gone too fast and parents are scared. And a lot of people, parents ask, people ask me, well, you know this, what should I do? Parents don't know where, who they should turn to, how they should have their voices heard. They don't understand what's happening, it's going too fast. I think that parents are your best resource in Guilford. We're completely committed to our kids and would, you know, do anything, and we just need to know what's the best form so we, our voices can be heard. I think all of us just, you know, it's going too fast. I mean, right now, we don't have books, we don't have, you know, professional development. Yeah. Yeah, I'll leave it at that. I have been, you know, working with the state on some of these issues. I appreciate how far Guilford has come, but it's a challenging time, and parents need a forum. They need to know how their voices can be heard in a public way and feel like their voices are actually being listened to.
Give us your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jenny Fredericks.
Okay, others? Okay. I mean, as I noted, I'm sure we'll talk about some of those issues.
This item was on my report, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So are we up to 7.1? I guess we are.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Did we do the workshop minutes?
I think we did them together. I think the motion was a joint motion, which I know you don't like, but, you know, it's 7.1, update on administrative vacancies.
So I have a fairly brief report for you this evening. It does cover a variety of items. At this point, we continue to be in the midst of two administrative searches. In the LEAT search, we have begun winnowing down the list of finalists. We have conducted site visits. Amy was part of site visits that we conducted last week. We are in the final stages of reference checking, and I should, I'm confident that I will be approaching the board soon and asking you to schedule a special meeting on that search. In the Baldwin search, we begin our work in earnest tomorrow. We have a panel of candidates coming in to have the first round of interviews tomorrow. Barbara's going to be participating in those interviews. We will be at Lethrip House interviewing all day tomorrow. I would again only reiterate that this has been an exciting search, and I have been very pleased with the amount of interest that we have received for both of these positions. I do think that I will have to schedule two separate meetings for the Board of Education. I don't believe that we will have the candidates prepared at the same time, and I don't want to slow down the process for LEAT, so we'll be coming to you on that one prior to coming to you on the Baldwin search. I also did have the Common Core State Standards Forum as an update item that I wanted to share with the board. As you're aware, we met on May 29th. We invited five teachers to join with the community. If there was a misinterpretation into the question that was phrased that shaped the invitations for that forum, then I will own that misinterpretation. I did engage in several conversations, and I believe this board was asked to have a conversation about how the Common Core state standards are being realized at the classroom level. And we felt that the best way to do that would be to ask teachers to come forward and talk about their experiences at the classroom level. We had about 50 parents who came out and participated. I note that the teachers who participated, and I received a number of positive comments following the evening, and I did receive comments similar to the ones that we heard tonight. I think that we do need to continue the conversation, which is essentially what I heard. I think that we need to have teachers come back again. We have committed to do that as soon as this summer, and I think we need to continue that conversation into next year. We need to recognize that summer is not an ideal time for parents. I think we host that conversation for whomever can attend that conversation, and then I think we continue that conversation into next year. I do recognize that we seated the panel with some questions up front, and that took some time. We were simply conscious of having our teachers back in the classroom the next morning, and I was cautious about asking teachers to be out until 10 o'clock into the evening. Maybe with a summer schedule, we can extend the evening hours and stay later. I do think I want to suggest to the board that perhaps we should schedule a public hearing on the topic, and so that it is an evening that is specifically scheduled for the board and the administration to listen and listen only. Every time I engage in the conversation, I know that I get excited, I know that I present it in a very positive light, and I think perhaps scheduling a public hearing and asking the community to come out and simply be listened to by the board and the administration could be one step in that conversation, rather than calling it a forum or calling it a conversation or calling it a panel where I know that there is going to be a lot of very positive information that I want to continue to share and in fact to champion. So we will schedule another conversation to happen this summer. We will schedule a follow-up conversation to that to happen early in next school year once we've returned to the schools, and I would suggest that the board might want to consider a hearing, a formal public hearing on a topic as we do with the budget, where we ask the community to come out and share their concerns. I'm not sure about timing for that. Part of me would like to do it as soon as possible. Part of me recognizes that summer is not great timing for that, but perhaps we can discuss that at a board level and have that happen. The Register was there. The Register ran a story on it, and I need to say that I was really pleased with the coverage that the Register provided. I will note that this board has had multiple opportunities to talk with teachers this year. We hosted an annual roundtable conversation where you had a small group conversation with teachers where in fact the administration absented ourselves from the conversation. We had a number of teachers who came out to be part of the adoption dialogue. We had teachers who volunteered to be part of the forum. I think that including teachers in the conversation is important. In fact, I believe it's essential. If ever we give the suggestion that as the administration, we are trying to remove ourselves from that conversation in place of teachers, I appreciate that being brought to our attention because in fact it is a conversation that includes teachers. I have never proffered teachers to be between this administration and this Board of Education, and I would never shrink from the responsibility that this administration takes, in fact, the pride that this administration takes in how we have responded to state mandate, to local directive, to supporting our teachers in the best way that we can as they go through this transitional phase. We have commented repeatedly, Mr. Bloss, you've commented that you've never seen teachers working as hard as you have seen them work in these last two years. I wholeheartedly agree with that. I know that teachers are struggling. I know that teachers have a difficult time with the work that's on their plate, but I know that our teachers are proud of the work that they're doing, and I know that the majority of our teachers feel that the work is moving us in the right direction. Bumpy, imperfect, incoherent, but good work in moving in the right direction. And I'd be happy to engage in conversation with the board about the forum or about where we expect to go next.
Yeah, I think we do a meeting, and if people can come, they can come. If they can't come, they can't come, you know, and it's, you know, we don't, I mean, and there have been other meetings this year, have there not?
Yes. Last year, we began discussing the Common Core state standards in 2010 when they first rolled out. We did begin by focusing with our staff. Last year, we had a GCV television program on the Common Core that was recorded and rebroadcast multiple times. Dr. Keen hosted two different conversations, one in the same room in the public library, but one also hosted up at Jones to have conversation with faculty members. Dr. Keen and I have both visited numerous PTO meetings to discuss. I remember a night at Adams where Mrs. Walker ran back to her office and got examples of the types of problems that we work with in the Common Core. And we have scheduled at least two formal meetings with this Board of Education where Dr. Keen and I and Mrs. Carreri presented instruction that aligned with the shifts in the Common Core. I believe one was in 2012 and one was in 2013. We did a language arts-focused evening in the Learning Center at the high school where we asked you to move the furniture around as well as part of the instructional focus. I believe we talked about a letter from a Birmingham prison, and we hosted a second evening at Lakes where Mrs. Carreri took you through some mathematical instruction, and Mr. Ireland did better than many of the rest of us, but we looked at some of the problem-solving approaches that would be taken in mathematics instruction. We have a section on our website that has been dedicated to Common Core information, commonly asked questions, links have been provided. I have to say, it is difficult, it is difficult for any community, I think it's been difficult for any community, in Connecticut at least from my experience, to engage in those conversations proactively. I think it has been natural for parents to become more engaged, more concerned about the Common Core this school year. Guilford is not the only community that has experienced an increase in interest, an increase in concern this year. And so I applaud the parents who have been part of the conversation this year in raising those concerns. I've had numerous conversations at Lethrip House with individual families and with small groups of concerned folks to talk about what we're doing with Common Core. I know that I come off as a zealot, I know that I can come off as a salesman. I continue, I will continue to say, we take pride in the work that we're doing, recognizing how difficult it is for many of the people involved, parents and teachers and students. We talk about parents and teachers going through this transitional phase. We're acutely aware of the fact that our students are going through this transitional phase. We discuss our kids, we talk about our kids, we talk about how we support them in their classrooms, and we need to continue to open the doors for parents to feel that they are a welcomed part of that conversation.
Do, yes.
I think it's good to hear. I think we certainly need some more conversation about this as it rolls out. One of the most interesting pieces of information that I got about Common Core was the CEA survey from February of this year where they asked about 1,400 teachers around the state what their perceptions were about implementation of the Common Core. And there, a lot of them were somewhat positive, a lot of them were mixed, a lot of it depended, I think, on implementation, which is the recurrent theme that I'm hearing from parents is, you know, how are we implementing in Guilford? And something I'd like to know as a board member, how does that differ from other implementations around the state? I mean, it does seem like we're, you know, jumping in, you know, feet-first the whole thing, you know, we're going to go in and do this entirely, whereas other districts may not be changing as much. And maybe that's a perception that I have, and I don't know what the reality is. But I'm wondering just about, you know, we talk about these forums, and we talk about people coming to us and writing emails and stuff like that, but what about a survey mechanism to reach out to the parents and the teachers and try to understand what their perceptions are of implementation? Because I do feel like I'm somewhat in the dark about what the general sense is. I mean, we hear that most of the teachers support it, or, you know, the parents say this or they say that, and we certainly hear from the vocal ones or the ones that, you know, we've picked to come out and talk about the Common Core. But I'm just wondering, I just feel like I don't, I have incomplete information about what people are perceiving within the district, both on the parent's side and the teacher's side and even the student's side. And it's not that hard to do these days to send out an electronic survey to get comments and perceptions on this, and I'm just wondering if that's something we might think about.
It's absolutely something to think about. Sending out the survey is not the challenging part. Creating a survey that is balanced and thoughtful and elicits balanced feedback is the challenge. Writing surveys is a lot more difficult than sending surveys out.
Yeah, no, I totally get that. I mean, there's, just to even use the CEA survey, it would be interesting to see how our district perceives things differently from, you know, the state as a whole. And I just think there's enough thoughtful people on the board and within the administration that we maybe could come up with a balanced survey that really gives the opportunity for parents and teachers to anonymously respond in a way that would give us a bigger picture of what's going on in the district. And that, I mean, is something that I would certainly value just from a board perspective.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. I'd like to comment about the question about where do we go next from here. I think that there are two aspects of where we go next. One is further transmission to the community. About what exactly is the Common Core and how are we implementing? That's factual, that's information. We've had forums, we've had discussions, you mentioned the GCTV. I think we need another one of these with the administration and teachers, which probably should be recorded for TV, for GCTV, and parents or anybody who's interested can watch that under their new technology, could call it up when they want to see it and not when it's necessarily shown. I think that's important because the more facts that are in people's hands, the better we will be. Second is perception, misinformation, concerns, questions, which we've heard tonight and previously from some parents. I look back into our recent past when we discussed all-day kindergarten, and we were extraordinarily patient, listening to lots of people's concerns on both sides. And I, my feeling was everybody in the community who wanted to had ample opportunity on more than one occasion to address us. In the proper decision, and it will be implemented in the fall. We need more of that. Those were agenda-less meetings, if you will. There was no agenda. We listened, and we didn't react. We listened hard. We could react later. But I want to hear what goes on in the grocery store because I don't do most of my family's shopping, and I'm, and I'm not at the, not at the soccer games anymore. I used to be. So I would like to hear, and I think it's incumbent upon all of us and the people in the community to get their colleagues to come. Bill's right. We have forums, we have discussions, and just a handful show up. The community also has an obligation to get people to come and speak or write if they're not comfortable standing, and I know a lot of people are not comfortable standing in front of a microphone, but they front of a microphone, but they could write, and somebody else could read it to them. But we want to hear, and I know I speak for everybody on this board, we want to hear what people are feeling, thinking, what their concerns are. And I know that the administration wants to hear the same things. So I think we need two, two procedures. One informational, educational, and the other to listen. That's my four cents.
I'll, I'll second what both of you say, and particularly the idea of a survey, because I think you'll get a lot of objective information from people who don't want to write a letter and are terrified to stand up here and can answer questions. And I think it's, everyone will be answering the same thing, and you can then compare what you get back.
Anybody else? Any other thoughts?
Well, I think, and, and I realize that the summer is coming, but this seems to be a topic on people's minds, and I think that we should try and go ahead with some of this as soon as we could. I, I don't see any reason to wait till the fall.
No, I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, you, that's fine. You do the best you can do, and it may not be as well-attended as it might be if it was in September, okay.
It was just a detail that I wanted to name upfront. It is in no way a suggestion that we shouldn't have the meeting, I just want to label upfront that it's a summer meeting, and I think that means that we repeat some of this when we're back in session in September.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. I mean, we're all interested in getting the feedback, and if we have to have two meetings, we have to have two meetings.
And maybe more than two as we get into the school year. More things kind of come up when, during the school year, and parents are experiencing different things, teachers that maybe do experience, and we could do more of a listening kind of activity, appear at more PTOs for listening. There are many ways of communication.
Well, that, that is one thing I would like to suggest. I think everybody's linked to a school, right? I'd like to suggest that each, everybody go to the first PTO meeting in September and see what the PTO members are talking about on this, and, and, and I think that would be a, a absolutely helpful, a helpful place to get some other, another source of information on this. Anything else?
This has been helpful information, and we appreciate it.
Okay. Whoever, was it Dr. Moore's suggestion? It would be sort of interesting to know what, say, Glastonbury is doing differently, or somebody else. It's, you know, Glastonbury I just think is our twin town, demographically in many ways, but if you could pick a couple of...
Yes.
And say, look, these, this is what these people are doing. I, you know, I think we all feel the frustration about the curricular materials, and, and I, you know, I've said it before, I, the one thing I've, I am really surprised about by all of this, given that these were proposed in, before 2010, because that's when they were adopted, so they were probably proposed starting, what, '07, '08, somewhere around there?
Conversation started.
You would think that sometime, somebody would put together good materials for each of the... It's just astounding to me that, that that did not happen. I, you know, and I think we've all commented on linking teacher evaluations to standardized test score performances that haven't been designed yet. Was probably not very thoughtful, not very prudent, we know that. That's been decoupled, you know, we've slowed down at a minimum. My guess is it's gonna be more than slowed down, but that's just a guess.
I spent half of this past Saturday with a small group and the Commissioner of Education talking about the timing, the scheduling, and, and the plate, and, and what we have on our plate right now, how this not, this never should have become the plate, and now knowing that it is, that it needs to remain the plate for some time, and that we shouldn't be adding other initiatives, and we shouldn't be adding a lot of extra. We need to now be slowing down and spending the time to master everything that we have. New standards that are connected to a new assessment that then is intended to inform a new teacher evaluation system. Just saying it, you can hear a chronology, but in fact, we did it all at the same time. And so...
Well, the state did it all at the same time, let's be...
Everybody jumped into the work all at the same time. And so, yes, it adds to the stress, it adds to the, the challenge. They're also interconnected and interrelated. We began this school year in September trying to articulate for the staff and for the community how these pieces fit together, and that there is an interconnection and an interrelation to them. But sometimes rolling things out in stages works a whole lot better than trying to bite it all off at once. Knowing that, I'd be happy to share what other school districts are doing, how they have attempted to manage the work, and how there are parallels between decisions we've made, or what other people are doing differently and how we're learning from them. I regularly work with a group of superintendents, I have visited multiple other schools around the state this year, and, and regularly come back with ideas about how we can improve our work here in Guilford based on what others are doing. I would be happy to share that and make that more transparent for the, the board so that you're hearing responses and seeing what some other districts are doing.
I'd also like to hear what Madison, as well as Glastonbury...
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else on this for now?
Good.
Okay. Seven point three, we did. Seven point four, the report on the bus accident. I think everybody knows that there was an accident on, what is it, May 28th?
May 28th, yeah, wholly different sort of topic. On May 28th, at approximately 11:15, traveling home from the Halo Theater Awards, it is sort of like the Tony Awards for high school theater, two Guilford school buses were involved in an accident. They were traveling together. The bus that was following ended up striking the bus that was in front. Mr. Masenti and his team responded to the situation. I need to, I need to applaud Mr. Masenti and his team for the way that they responded to the situation in the moment. We had police responded, medical personnel responded, STA responded, and Mr. Masenti responded to be at the scene to contact parents. The first course of action was to ensure that all of our students were well, and that we got our students back to Guilford High School safely. Back here on the ground, I need to commend the Guilford Police, who weren't present at the location of the accident, it took place out of town, but they were here in our parking lot explaining to parents why the buses were late and, and what was happening and how we were getting the kids back home. At this time, as background to the accident, I am continuing to collect information from STA and from the state police. I have asked STA to give me a full report that includes all maintenance checks on both buses that were involved, the driver's history and any response that they took with the specific driver following the incident. I have asked state police to respond and how they reacted, and were there any issue, citations issued. I've asked STA to talk to me about any training or consequences moving forward, and I'm still collecting some of that information. I do have the maintenance information on the bus. It appears that both buses were checked properly, all of the timelines were met, the buses were working appropriately, the brakes had been replaced in October of this school year, and the bus seemed to be functioning mechanically properly. I will have more information for this board when I come back to you at a later date. I do need to note that a number of our students experienced complications, including injuries as severe as concussions. So we had students who were seen by medical personnel, they did have concussions following the incident, we had a staff member who experienced a concussion. We're taking it very seriously. I have expressed my concerns to STA. I believe they are responding appropriately and seriously. And I want to finish again by applauding Mr. Masenti and his team. The day after the accident, on May 29th, I was in the high school, I went to one of the Coral classrooms, there were a number of students who had been on the buses that evening, they were now in school the next morning. The first thing they wanted to tell me was that Mr. Masenti showing up and getting out of his car at that time of night on the side of the road immediately calmed them down. They got a sense of familiarity, they knew that there was somebody there, they knew taking care of them, and they immediately felt better. Staff members, Kevin Buno and Cara Mulqueen Teesdale, were on the buses with the students when the incident happened. I cannot commend them highly enough for their professionalism and the way that they responded on the site. I've been contacted by multiple parents who reiterated what their children told me, that they were just happy that they knew that Mr. Masenti and his teachers were taking care of their kids. And then the second thing the students wanted to tell me was how they did at the awards ceremony. We came home with some, with some recognitions that night, so they wanted to get right on to how well they did. I will continue to keep the board apprised as I collect final information. It was a serious incident, I'm reviewing our contract responses with the company, I'll continue to monitor their response. And again, we're glad that all of our students are okay, and proud of our staff members and how they responded.
Do you think that you'll be in a position next month to be able to give us a more definitive report?
Yes, I think without question.
Have the police, the state, maybe I should just, I know a little bit about accident investigations from my day job, as Mr. Kazin and I both do. Durham is a resident state trooper facility, so that means the state police would be in charge of the investigation, and typically, they would do a, a, there were no arrests at the scene, is that correct?
There were no arrests made at the scene. I do believe that a traffic violation was issued to one of our drivers, and I do know that a drug and alcohol screening was conducted immediately, not by the police, but by STA. The police did not issue a breathalyzer on the scene, they saw no need for it. STA, however, has policy, and per policy, a complete drug and alcohol screening was conducted.
Yeah, and just, I want to just note, when you say "our" driver, the driver's not our driver.
It's an STA employee.
STA is, is a, an independent contractor, and the employees of STA are its employees, not ours. And so, contractually, they are responsible for any, any mistakes that any drivers make, that is, they are responsible. The state police, though, is, by the state police, I will say from experience, and I think Mr. Kazin will back this up, they don't turn this around.
Next month reporting is optimistic, but...
I will, at a minimum, I believe I'll have more information from STA to report to you. I appreciate your note on the, the state police. And, and Mr. Bloss, you're exactly correct. What I am doing is monitoring the investigation of one of our vendors. I am in no way conducting an investigation of any Guilford Public School employees. This was a vendor-operated contract, STA operates a contract for us, they're a vendor that provides a service. We have contractual responses, remedies, and I'm monitoring how they respond.
But obviously, this is about the last thing.
You know, this is a deeply, deeply disturbing incident, just about the last thing that a bunch of kids coming to an awards ceremony should be facing. I mean, it's terrifying for parents, it's terrifying for the kids, it's, if there's a way that, that incidents can be prevented, we have every expectation that STA is gonna do that. And if they can't, then we have contractual remedies ourselves. But I, I have a high degree of trust that the state police investigation will be objective and will call it as it sees it, if you will. And if there are mechanical issues, that's one thing, if there's driver error, that's some, maybe something else. But, you know, that, I, I think they, they will do a thorough investigation of the...
I have every...
And so, we'll, we'll, I'm very confident that they'll do a, a full investigation and give us some, some solid answers. Unfortunately, it's not as quick as you might like. On the other hand, it doesn't sound like there's, the buses have to be inspected, obviously, very, very regularly, and, you know, I take it there's no suggestion at this point that there's some kind of a systemic inspection of the buses.
Absolutely none. I have no concerns at this point that the inspection calendar was not kept, that the bus was not maintained properly. It appears that the bus was in fine working condition and working properly at the moment that the accident occurred. If I had any concerns of that nature, we would be having a very different conversation.
We did get a communication from, from a parent whose child was not hurt, that they, that they would have appreciated some more formal communication as to what the status was of the investigation and so forth. That's, I think that's a fair comment, and just some, hopefully, this is not something too... Does come up again, it's, it's a prob, not a bad approach. Second, I, had the, a mom got to me in the grocery store last week, yeah, last week, who said, she said, "I'm sure you get a lot, already got a lot of emails from people talking about the..." Mr. Masenti was at the administration, were, and how professional... She was actually on one of the buses, one of the parents, and she said that the Guilford Public School staff and the Guilford Police were absolutely at the peak of their performance and, and very responsible, calming. Mr. Masenti just happens to live not that far from the, the accident site, and so he was not on the trip. He came out, and, and that sentiment that you described was conveyed to me from one of the parents that was, was on the trip. So I want to, I think we need to thank him.
In fact, I think he was on the trip, got home, and then turned around and went out again.
Oh, is that right?
Yes, because he wasn't on the school bus, but I believe he was present at the awards ceremony, got home a little ahead of the bus transportation, but then turned around and went back out to be present at the scene. I did receive the same comment that you received, Mr. Bloss, but I received several others along the lines of commending the staff for their work. And so, as with everything, we will learn everything that we can from this incident and, and improve our process should it ever occur again.
Anything else on this? Okay. Seven point five is an update on the review of the High Achieving Learners Program. We've been talking about this for a while.
And very briefly, I'm very happy to report to you that after meeting with five or six different possible vendors for this, for this study that we've discussed, after receiving three initial proposals, after meeting with a small representative group to review those proposals, after having asked for two of the proposals to be revised, and meeting again with the small representative group to look at those revisions, I'm happy to tell, to inform this board that I have every intention of contacting Dr. James Borland of Teachers College out of Columbia University and sharing with him our intent to contract with him to conduct a study of how we support our highest achieving students within this school district. His proposal falls below the formal bidding threshold of the Board of Education. I think that we have been more rigorous in our screening than we would have been had we gone through a formal bidding process. I very much appreciated the participation of school administrators, a classroom teacher, Mrs. Dudley, Mrs. Sullivan, a couple volunteer parents who came in to be part of that small ad hoc group that, that reviewed these applications. And I am looking forward to beginning work with Dr. Borland, who intends to begin collecting data over the summer, look at classrooms, talk to parents, talk to students, talk to teachers, and, and give us a report on how we support those highest achieving students that would include sections on what we do well, things that we could be doing better or more deeply, and recommendations as to how to move in that direction to do those things better and more deeply. Oh, and Dr. Bell Stracy, I apologize, it's part of, part of the conversation as well.
Please, no problem.
You're just out of the sight line.
No problem.
So, doesn't require board action, I, it's below the bidding threshold. We did...
How much is this gonna cost?
With expenses, I expect it will be in the ballpark of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars when expenses are added. The contract is for less than that, although there will be a reimbursing for expenses, or we'll be picking up some cost of expenses for travel and for lodging when Dr. Borland is with us. I will note that we also received formal proposals from the Center for Giftedness out of the University of Connecticut, as well as from the District Management Council out of Cambridge. And we also had conversations that helped shape this work, which I very much appreciated with, is it, can I get the Center for, the name just escaped me, it was just on the tip of my tongue, and I apologize. Lots of conversations along the way.
You know, the futures report, looking at special needs kids, had a profound effect in this district, and I am hoping that this process will, will be an equally profound effect. It's badly needed, and I'm glad it's moving along.
Likewise.
Can I ask somebody that was on the committee for your thoughts? This was, was this the committee's recommendation? What were the, some of the things that led to this particular proposal being moved forward?
I, I'm, I'm going to pass this on to my colleagues, because I am fortunate with late to the second meeting.
It was the, the one that I think the majority of the people there recommended, and we went through both, the last two that were chosen, and there were a lot of reasons why we'd settled on that one. But that was, and it wasn't price, it was not the bottom line, it was really based on a lot of other things. And we thought that maybe dealing with... And we thought that maybe dealing with one person, Dr. Borland, who would come and evaluate, as opposed to, you know, a committee of high-priced people that would never, sometimes give you not just equality that one person could give us. And he could make it, it could happen faster, more efficiently, and I think that's what we wanted. We wanted to happen within the next, he'll start right away.
Yeah, it was good. We, I left undecided between the two, but was happy that we went back and asked for more information from both places. I couldn't quite decide if I would rather have one person's opinion or a group. I think it'll be fine.
Well, he certainly has some relevant writing, such as evaluating gifted programs, a broader gifted education, and planning and implementing programs for the gifted.
Yes, yes, very, a lot to recommend him.
And he's done forty-six such evaluations, apparently, so just by going through the process forty-six times.
Well, that's true. Other questions to ask?
Did the committee get any examples of his evaluations in other districts?
Yes, we saw a redacted copy of a report that Dr. Borland had created, and we were able to share that at the committee level. I have a copy of that. I'd be happy to share it with board members.
Yeah, I'd love to see that. I was a big proponent of doing this study. Unfortunately, I was away and did not participate in the selection process. Certainly, this, Mr. Borland looks eminently qualified to do this. One of the, just, I had a chance to read over the proposal briefly, and he mentions that, he talks a lot about qualitative data and how this really isn't a quantitative evaluation. And in his critique of quantitative, he talks about how, you know, it'd be really tough to do randomized control trial and things like that. But he does mention that he would be willing to consider quantitative evaluation. I guess, I, you know, feel like there's a lot of things that we could get quantitatively in the district, at least to compare where we are with other districts. I mean, I tend to be a numbers person. I think the qualitative stuff is very helpful. But I'm wondering if, in responding to him, we could ask him to provide some quantitative benchmarks of, you know, where our district is on certain things. I certainly tend to evaluate or think about things that way.
I mean, we could certainly look at holistic measures. I think it would be difficult to try to isolate quantitative measures around this particular population, because this particular population has not been supported in any kind of pull-out segregated program. And so, yeah, we could absolutely look at raw data about how Guilford students do at certain benchmarks. Obviously, we could go back to past CMT, CAPT, SAT, college placement. We could look at all those. That's a measure of the whole system, and certainly, these students are part of that whole system. But I'm not sure how we would, how we would tease out high achieving performers and compare their performance to other high achieving performers in other districts when we haven't had...
Not really even talking about the performance of the students, but more the metrics around a program. And my, at least, initial goal with this was not so much talented and gifted. I really actually shy away from that term. I think the high potential learners is the thing that we've really looked at. And I'm more interested in the top, you know, twenty percent and how we're doing with them. Talented and gifted is often considered the top five percent. And also, in reading this proposal, he talks again and again about evaluating our talented and gifted program. But we don't have a talented and gifted program, right?
We support the students currently through the mainstream classrooms. And so, he's aware that we don't have specifically assigned talented, or teachers of the talented and gifted. He's aware that we don't have specific pull-out programs for talented and gifted. So, yes, he's aware that we don't have a designated standalone program. He's coming to study, to evaluate how we support those students within the current environment and then make recommendations. Whether he might recommend a more, a more standalone or pull-out program, we won't know until we see his recommendations.
We did, we did discuss that a little, I mean, I pushed back on that, quite frankly, a little bit. Because that was a concern when I read, when we looked at the initial three proposals. That was a concern of mine, that he would come in and not necessarily recognize what, not not recognize what he was looking at, but have a view that might make it harder to see kind of how we address kids, what we might need to do differently, et cetera. But I think we felt comfortable by the end of two discussions that this was someone who could identify what we were doing and provide kind of realistic approaches moving forward. That may or may not include some pull-out pieces. That would be kind of a wait and see, depending on what he found. But I had a similar, I had a similar concern on the first read, absolutely.
You can only recommend within some little box, right? We didn't give any similar direction to the Futures Report and evaluators. And I think we brought the same basic thing that we were looking at from the special ed study or review. And that is, what do we do, what can we do better, right? And it's just as broad as that. If that, if you're saying that, and that Freeman told me I can't go into that, then that's not what we're looking for. But are you comfortable that he's...
I, yeah, no, 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 I think so. And again, I brought it up in both conversations that we had. I mean, that was a concern. Dr. Moore, the other thing, and I don't know if this is what you're saying or not. I mean, one of the things that I would hope that would come from this proposal moving forward is a way to track these kids. You know, I think that part of what we want from the, part of what I would like to see from a proposal is, what are the methods we're using? How can we improve on those methods? I mean, I think we're in agreement that we need to improve on those methods. He has, certainly has a process of talking to, in a qualitative fashion, obviously, teachers and administrators and Board of Ed and parents. And, but I would like to, I would really like to see part of the proposal be about then how do we quantitatively track our progress moving forward? We may not have that data now, but I think we need to come up with a way to make sure that we take this proposal and then can follow through and see results of that. That may be different than what you're talking about now.
Be able to provide that sort of a guidance on how to...
I think, I think we asked for that. I think, I mean, I would like to ask for that.
Would it be helpful, has he got any kind of written direction or is he just being turned loose? Would it be helpful if the board members kind of put together individual questions that we think ought to be part of it? Would that...
I think that would be helpful. I don't see how that would be, I don't see how that couldn't be helpful to him. He has received a written prompt from me, and he and I had several phone conversations before the first proposal was submitted. He and I had a lengthy phone conversation following that first meeting when I asked him to revise his proposal. And so, I think he has a sense of what we're looking for. But again, we didn't put out a bid document. We did not try to shape the study. Mr. Blas, it's essentially what you said. Take a look at what we're doing for these students and tell us what we can do better. And his, his charge has been that broad. There have been no limitations on what he may or may not recommend to us.
Is the plan that he would have a report, well, enough in advance of the next budget cycle? That we could, if there are financial costs, and anything that we'd be able to work those in for next year?
Possibly. We talked about that. I think I would certainly at least have interim information. I don't know if we'll have the full report. We'll certainly have the full report, I would imagine, before April when voting on the budget. I think it would be a matter of degree. I think if his recommendation came in, and if we got it in November or December, and it was for seven full-time teachers of talented and gifted, one to be assigned at each building, that that might be something the board might need more than one budget cycle to wrestle with and come to terms on. So I think, if you remember when the Futures Report...
Which we did for the Futures Report.
Right. When the Futures Report came in, we chunked their recommendations into three buckets. One that we saw as low-hanging fruit, that would be easy to implement with little to no cost. One that we saw as interim measures that might take a year or two to enact. And then some that we saw as long-term and sustained, either because of a significant investment or because we were talking about slow change in culture and climate. And in fact, I think we moved through those buckets more quickly than we had originally planned when first presenting the priorities. But I would think, whether we get it in November or April, there might be items that we recognize that we can tackle in next year's budget cycle and some others that, for a number of reasons, maybe philosophical, maybe financial, we choose to put into a longer-range plan and come at in a future budget year. Even if the full report landed on my desk before Halloween, I'm not sure that this board might choose to tackle it all in one year.
Depends on what it says.
We'll digest it and prioritize and go after it in the same way that we went after the Futures Report.
The timeline in here is just outdated from when the proposal was made?
Yes, I think if you just took the timeline and rolled the dates forward, it would give you an idea of when we would conclude. We expect it'll begin work. I plan on calling them tomorrow. I didn't want to make any such phone call until this meeting was behind us. But receiving your encouragement to move forward, I don't think it involves formal action from the board unless you'd like to...
No, it's not an agenda item to act on. You're doing this, you know, not unilaterally, but with, not through the formal bid process, so you don't need our authority. There is money in the budget for this.
There's money in the budget to make this investment, and it's below the bid threshold.
Okay.
So I do intend to do it on my authority, but did not want to do it without having this conversation with the Board of Education.
Sure, that's a good idea. Anybody else have any comments or thoughts on this? Okay, I mean, I guess if there are people who have specific questions that you think that Dr. Borland ought to look at, just if you'll email them to Dr. Freeman and...
Yep, I'd be happy to collect those for Dr. Borland.
Yeah.
And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Do you want to say anything about the new website?
Oh, thank you very much. We have a new website. Actually, we have the same website with a refreshed look. I would like to encourage everyone to please visit our new website. You can access that by going to our old address, and you will be redirected to the new site. Or you could go to Guilfordschools.org. There is an S in there.
In fact, there's two S's.
I want to commend Lori Han for all of the work that she put into this. For years now, I have been told that the Guilford Public Schools website has a lot of good information, and it's not really user-friendly. There was a lot of good information that wasn't always easy to find, or it was a little overwhelming. The new website has been redesigned to be more user-friendly, to operate better. It has all of the same quality information that it had before. It will have more helpful school and district calendars. It will have an easier-to-access news feed, and it has features that will allow us to grow. We had outgrown our website. Every time we wanted to try something new, we had to figure out how to make that work. This website actually has capacity that, right now, because our plate is relatively full, that we don't want to take advantage of, but it gives us room to grow. We're very excited about it. I would encourage board members, and I would encourage the community, to please take a look at our new website. I hope that you find it as friendly, and I hope that you find it as helpful as we all do. And again, I want to thank Lori Han for all of her work that went into creating that. Thank you, Mr. Kazin.
Okay, thank you. Item eight is, the Board Agenda 8.1 is to act on a personnel item, and that is to ratify the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Marsha Cornicini, who is a special ed teacher at Jones after twenty-four years of service. So is there a motion that we accept for resignation with things?
Second.
Any other questions, thoughts, comments? That's another, obviously, very experienced teacher who will miss. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Act on recommendations from the Policy Committee. This is 8.2.1, revisions to Policy Number 6800 and the accompanying regulation. Who's going to talk about this?
Yes, I will do that. This is, I think this was on our agenda last board meeting, and seeing that it was quarter of eleven or so, we decided to postpone it. So again, this is the Student Wellness Nutrition and Physical Activity. We have the policy and the regulation. The Wellness Committee, which is a committee of Guilford Public School staff, administration, Board of Ed liaisons, and community members, did a thorough review, edit, and improvement of both the policy and specifically the regulation. Again, to quickly summarize, there were changes made in terms of making sure we were up to date with kind of present regulations. There was a great deal of what is now kind of extraneous text taken out. For instance, the prior, or the present, I should say, regulation lists specific food choices, which now are kind of summarized under present regulations. And there was some extra work put into the physical activity section of the regulation, because there were concerns that the, that the present reg did not sufficiently address physical activity and had focused only primarily on nutrition, or the balance was off. So I am presenting this as an act on item. Again, the instruction, the Student Wellness Nutrition and Physical Activity policy and its regulation.
So that's a motion?
That is a motion.
Second.
Second.
I do have one question about it. Am I reading correctly that the regulation requires us to participate in the National School Lunch Program? And I'm looking on, gosh, I don't know how to explain what I'm looking, 6800B.
It doesn't require that we participate, but it requires that if we comply with federal, state, and local requirements, we will, it will, our program will be written in accordance with their guidelines. It doesn't mean that we have to participate. The state does require, and Linda, you want to talk a little bit about, we have to do an attestation every year?
Right.
That we have met the guidelines, and that's something we do bring in front of the board?
Right, every year we bring it in front of the board, saying that we are going to meet the guidelines and that we are going to comply with all the regulations.
And we get five cents a student or something? I don't know.
We get an additional, it's ten cents for each meal, and so much for every breakfast by complying. We do get about fifteen thousand dollars, I think, total for complying with the National School Lunch Program.
So, so my thought would be to make that an administrative decision and not, and not commit ourselves to that with the policy, because it is a financial point. I mean, I'm not suggesting that we, that we not follow proper nutritional guidelines or that we not follow laws, but I'm not sure why we would make a commitment to do anything like that when there might come a time when we decide it's not in our best interest to do it. We do have a lunch program that is not self-supporting. There are a lot, a lot more changes coming down the pike. I just think it would be better not to commit to that.
This was recommended from the committee?
Yes.
Because actually, the committee asked us to add the website to the piece. And so, you know, this came to us, recommended from the committee, that we have the compliance piece in there. We did not question...
Right.
...these requirements. They were also, they are also in our current policy and reg. And it's like, I think you mentioned before, they actually list the foods and the...
What if we just dropped the word "comply"? What if we just restructured the sentence to say the school's meal program will be written to be in accordance with, and then listed, national, federal, state, and local requirements? Now it doesn't say that we're complying. It just says that we will write it in order to be, I mean, is that not softened enough?
Well, I guess, I mean, we have to comply with requirements. So my thought was if we simply stated, the school's meals program will comply with federal, state, and local requirements, period. Because we can be in compliance with any requirement, and I'm not sure what those requirements might be, but, you know, without actually following the school lunch program guidelines.
I don't think that's unreasonable. The, because you're almost, you're committing to following the federal guidelines, even if we, but not committing to be in the federal program. So why, why would we, I mean, it's maybe a good idea to stay in the federal program, right? But why don't we just say, well, putting aside whether we need to really say we're going to comply with federal law, given that we have to comply with federal law. I mean, I don't have, probably just put a period right there.
Put the period there and strike the rest?
Yeah, and I, I mean, I can't speak for the rest of the committee. As you can see, and as Dr. Keen pointed out, this was not a sentence that was added by the committee. It was simply one that was not touched in the nine-page review.
Right.
So, you know, if we feel that, that makes more sense, I don't see it making any, Barbara, I don't know if you agree or disagree. any, Barbara, I don't know if you agree or disagree.
No, I don't think that makes...
Or Gary, committee matters.
Wouldn't make a great deal of difference at all.
And I think there is a sentence that needs to be deleted also. The copy that I'm looking at is the last version. There's a parenthetical in the next paragraph that I think is a note to the drafters.
Little placeholder.
This is the section where we will ask...
You're working on a...
Am I working on, I think this is the one that was attached to the...
Agenda.
Yes, there were two that we gave you. One was completely, with all the changes listed, but there were so many, that we also gave you this one that just had a few of the final changes identified. So in your packet last month, you had one with a lot of red and strike throughs, plus this one, just because it was easier to read when we did the accepted changes. And then in this month, Terry only put the final one there.
There's still a section that needs to be...
There's still a, there's still a sentence that needs to be struck. It's a drafting note that is in the version that was attached to tonight's agenda.
This is the section where we will ask the Director of Food Service to provide wording such as...
Oh, my!
It's fine. It's a note. It's, okay.
Right. Just needs to be changed.
There we go.
I also have a...
Let's see if it works.
Right. I also have a question. Under the discussion about physical activity, it says, "All employees of the Guilford Public Schools shall not require any K-12 student to engage in physical activity as a form of discipline during the school day."
That's correct. That's now a regulation, a state.
No, I could understand that, but that leaves you over... Did a teacher say, "When you get home, I want you to do 400 push-ups"?
No. Twenty-two days is that, was to...
It speaks to coaching, that conditioning on the field and coaching on the field outside the bounds of the school day may still require physical activity. Now, it still should not be used as punishment, but often teams will do conditioning, will run, so...
No, that's fine, but this specifically...
Is it discipline when the coach says to the team player who is not paying attention and is, say, horsing around during practice, "I want you to do a lap"? Right?
Right.
Or do, down and do push-ups.
Right, yeah.
Or we lost yesterday because they outran us, we're going to be running all practice today. There's, there's a finer line in athletics between conditioning and discipline. So the legislation is very clear that during the teaching day, students cannot be asked to use physical activity as a form of punishment. You can't ask a student to run laps during recess as a punishment for misbehaving in class. There's a little more...
Or even a P. class, right? Or even a P. class, which is why the distinction after the end of school day.
Yes.
And we actually called to verify what they meant by the school day. Did that, you know, include extracurricular or co-curricular kinds of activities? And they said, no, the school day would be the normal school hours.
You know what's fascinating about this? The reason that this is a state law is because somebody was doing it.
Yes, of course. There's a specific carve-out for athletics.
There was also a piece, the bullet in front of it, that staff members in elementary schools shall not deny participation in recess or other required physical activity opportunities as a form of discipline or punishment. Both of those pieces around punishment and physical activity, whether it was withholding or requiring, were added to the law this year, and there was a reason that we said, you know, we really need to change this policy, and as a result, then the committee started...
Okay.
They'd already been working on some changes anyway, and so we brought it forward.
Okay. Good question.
But we will make those changes. We will take out the parenthetical, and I apologize for that. That was my fault.
Okay, so those changes are made by consent, I take it. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
The report from the superintendent, I assume, will follow the Health Advisory Committee?
I'm sorry?
There's a date for the Health Advisory Committee to provide a report to the superintendent, and the superintendent is to report to the board.
Annual report by September 30th.
Annual report by September 30th.
Right. But that's from the Health Advisory Committee to the superintendent.
To the superintendent.
Can we just have a standing agenda item on the meeting following that for the superintendent's report? I'd just like to make sure we get that.
Yep.
Okay. So motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
May I, I'm sorry, may I just make one comment, which is that Nancy Bishop has been leading this committee for the last several years, and I just wanted to thank her for all the time and energy she put into this. She is obviously retiring this year, and it was one of the many, many ways that she contributed to the school system. So I wanted to note that specifically, and also just thank the parents who participated, who put a lot of time, a lot of energy, and were really, really committed to trying to kind of write a policy or work on a policy that was in the best interest of the health of the kids in the, in our school system. So, thank you.
Speaking of Mrs. Bishop, and it's not on the agenda, but I'd just like to announce for the community that there will be a reception at, at the school for Mrs. Bishop on June 18th between 9:15 and 11:00. And I know I'm planning to attend. I know lots of people will be very interested in giving Mrs. Bishop a hug and thanking her for all of her great service.
Okay, great. I think, so unfinished business. I'm sure we don't have anything under that. So, committee reports, item 10, anything on the Policy Committee other than what we've talked about?
Yep.
Operations Committee, anything else? There was a meeting, I understand, with a health consultant? I don't know if, if...
Oh, yes.
Very, very helpful, the health consultant. It was delightful, and part of the meeting was, A, it was fun for us to meet the health consultant, who was very dynamic, very informed, very eager to teach us, to dialogue with us, to look at alternatives. He's willing to attend the Operations Committee on a quarterly basis to update us on what's happening with our health insurance. He's perfectly willing to come to board meetings and meet with us and inform us, talk with us, dialogue with us. I couldn't be more pleased that he changed. He is contracted, he's not yet, and he's working off the clock on his own time, and he met with, at least, I was there for two hours, and the meeting went on after I left, so... And I'd like to follow up, but, I mean, I could not be more pleased with the selection of this new consultant, because he has really brought some very actionable ideas to the table, and which I think are going to be beneficial to all the stakeholders relating to the health insurance issue. We're facing some, some tough choices with this Cadillac tax coming up, and, which is a very complicated and technical area, and it's going to be, it's going to be a real challenge for all, all boards. And I, I feel very good about having this guy on board. He, I, I've been working with him on one of the labor negotiations, and, I mean, he just worked all weekend, running models and cases for us. I mean, the difference between what we had as a consultant before and this as a resource is just like night and day. You say all weekend, in the middle, ungodly hours, in the middle of a Saturday night and Sunday night? Yeah. Running models.
Identifying the new consultant?
Joe Spurgeon of Milliman and Associates. And, and it's worth noting that Joe is recognized as an expert across the state and across the country. He is working with, not only is he advising us on how to move forward into the new realities of, of the ACA, but he is meeting with Connecticut legislators, he is meeting with politicians across the state. When Superintendent Mark Benigni from Meriden was invited to testify in Washington, D.C. about the impact of the ACA and specifically the Cadillac tax on Connecticut school districts, Joe Spurgeon helped to draft the superintendent's comments and traveled with the superintendent to testify in front of the congressional panel. He's an expert, he's a hard worker, he is personable, he's everything that we could be looking for, and I'm excited to work with him moving forward.
He was very good, very informative. It's definitely not my area of expertise, and I had a whole bunch of questions just generally about health insurance, and he answered them all, and I felt very well-educated when I walked away.
Okay. We do have an agenda item today in executive session to talk about a security issue relating to a new building, or a security evaluation. Is there anything else, building lines?
Building Committee meets tomorrow evening. I will remind the board that we are working on the finalization of the F, F, and E list. It will be a significant responsibility of this board to approve an F, F, and E list that should be finalized within the month of July in order to make our August deadline for state approval to continue with the project. The draft that you received at your last meeting works within a $2.7 million line item and was brought to you at approximately $2.5 million. It is something that Mr. Masenti and I and a number of teachers have worked closely with. I think Mr. Pinkney said it, for all of the elements that go into the building, the F, F, and E is the part that interacts most directly with our students. The HVAC system is incredibly important, but the kids never get their hands on it. They never actually interact with it. The desks, the tables, the chairs, the CNC machines, the technology are all items that kids directly interact with every day and every period of the school day, and so it's an incredibly important investment. The selection of the F, F, and E items follows the philosophy that this board articulated in your ed specs, talking about a building that is flexible, talking about classrooms that can be reconfigured quickly and comfortably without rattling the teeth of the people in the classroom below you. The furniture is durable, it is light, it is often on casters. It's designed in such a way that a classroom can be a lecture hall, and then it can be a conference table, and then it can be a theater, and then it can be a number of small group conversations, and all happen within a 45-minute period. So we will have that final list for you and probably another presentation for you when we ask you to approve that F, F, and E list.
All right. We'll talk about that next month. Any other town committee liaison reports?
The Acquisition Committee met, and we discussed easements and nothing else of particular relevance to the Board of Education.
Okay, good. Anything else on that? Okay, public questions? Anybody? Sure.
So life without all those people.
Those kids were great.
Oh, they were. That was neat.
Hi, I'm Pam Medvecky, 245 Flat Meadow Road. I, I attended the public forum about the Common Core that, you know, and parents requested, and with others waited some time for this opportunity that wasn't. I, I appreciated the teachers on the panel and Maria Carrari giving their time to make a thoughtful presentation. You know, the Common Core is not the what, it's the, or is the what. It's not, it is the what, it's not the exactly how the standards are implemented, and... Back up, is that the problem? Okay. I can't figure this out. So, the Common Core is the what, not the exactly how. And so there are nuances to the implementation that are, I think, at the core of what the conversation needs to be about. You know, we know we're going to have the Common Core, but exactly what should it look like in Guilford? It's not one-size-fits-all. There are nuances. We're a district, you know, who is in pretty good shape to start with, but how can we most benefit from what the Common Core can give us? What are the things about it that really speak to us? What are, what, what, how are we going to make, best tailor it to fit, to fit our students and our teachers and what they have, what, where they are today? I wanted to ask, so, the forum, as it was, I think, intended to be a place for parent input, became a presentation. But I wonder if, okay, I, I'm sorry. I attended as a fly on the wall at the Board of Education's Teacher Forum. I don't know if I'm calling that correctly. Is that what it's called, Mr. Glass?
We call it a roundtable.
A roundtable, whatever. It was such a neat thing. And where teachers could speak freely, and was very open, there was such a great rapport, clearly. And I think it was so constructive. It was so constructive because of that clear rapport, of the openness and the listening. And I, I think that, I, I wonder if we could have a parent, a, a public forum on Common Core that has that kind of approach. I think the parents don't think they have all the answers, but we, we need some, we do hold some insights and certainly have a stake or four in how this all plays out. And I believe firmly that we can put students first without opening up to parent input and student input that helps tailor, tailor the Common Core to suit us best. In the classrooms, they talk, we learn, my kids talk about accountable talk is very much, you know, in the, whatever, of, of elementary school at least, and going forward, the accountable talk. And I would like to see in Guilford, we have a, an interested community that's engaged and becoming more informed by the, by the day about Common Core, about education, interested in the conversation. I would love to see a community that's coming together, not butting heads, in a forum, an open forum, not an event, but an ongoing, open conversation where there's accountable listening, and not just accountable talk. And I, I believe an event could be the start of that, and then perhaps clear the air to move forward in that direction. I think it's badly needed at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies, please. I live on 99 Trolley Road. Been here 15 years. Prior to that, I lived in Newington for 60. Don't add the two together. I'm here tonight to talk primarily about safety. I feel that we should have an officer in the schools. I know that you're looking into it pretty heavily, that you're going to have a lot of security, you're going to have locked-down doors, you're going to have cameras, you're going to have just about everything you possibly, I know you reviewed it a couple times. I know you have officers that are coming by a couple times a day, so they continually are being observed by the students. But the people, the people that are, that are disturbed don't just decide one day they're going to trot into your school. They think about this for quite a while, whether it be a criminal or whether it be somebody that just has a problem. You can see that by the things, I'm sure you all have seen what's on TV and what's going on, and you realize that, give you an example, the fellow that shot everybody up in the movie theater, he didn't just decide he was going to do it and walk in and get a ticket and walk in there. No, he went in and got a ticket, walked to the exit, put something in the door so he could come, went back outside, got his gun, came back around the other way. They think this stuff out. Nothing is perfect, and no matter what you want to believe, they will figure a way, if somebody wants to, they'll figure a way to get into the school. Okay? And the problem is, once they're in the school... Okay, and the problem is, once they're in the school, three minutes, it's over. I don't want to see that here. When I called this in, the woman said, "Do you have a student in there?" I said, "No." Well, I do. I care a lot about all the kids in the schools. Excuse me, I'm a little, I care a lot about the kids in the school system. I'm on three commissions. I'm on the clammy commission. We take Cub Scouts out in the summertime, teach them about the environment, clamming and everything like that. And we just have a good time with them. I'm worried if somebody gets in here, I don't want to see the incidents like I see in other schools. I don't want to fix it after it's over, and I know it's going to cost money. I know we don't have seven policemen to put in. I know that we just don't have the money for it, but we got to start figuring a way to do that. I don't want to see us end up in the situations that I see in the past. So, I'm hoping that you will at least look into it, and I hope that we get something soon because it's bothered me from, for a year now, I've been waiting to hear something. I don't hear anything, so I've never been in here before, you people. They have started, I talked to, you know, I lived there 60 years, and I know a lot of people, a lot of the police department, I know them personally, and I know the Chief of Police, I talked to him, and they have it in Newington, they have it in West Harvard. And I'm not saying, well, they may have more money in their budget than we do, probably do. But I don't, it doesn't come down to money. We put eight firemen in. We needed them. They're good guys, and they do a good job. We do all-day kindergarten? Fine, if you want to have all-day kindergarten. You can find money for that, find money for this. I want to see an officer here. An officer here will get to know the kids, he'll talk with them, have interact with them. He may find out, they may find out something, one of their teachers will. And I know the teachers now are being aware that they've got to watch what's going on. But this guy, that's going to be his job. He's got to work with the kids. He's got to talk to them. He's got to get to know them, and he may find out something. If he does, we're ahead. If he doesn't, and if something happens, we're all responsible for that. We're all going to feel the pain. Because they belong, the kids belong to all of us. I'm not going to tell you how to do it. Maybe half come out of your department and half come out of the police department's budgets. I'm not going to tell you how to do that. You have to figure that out yourself. Actually, if you want to know the truth, I think this state is, should figure out something for that. Of course, they don't have any money. They can't even pass their own budget. Never mind trying to figure out something for you. But it's something we need to address. I know it's on your mind and you thought about it, but just think about what happened if we don't do something like this. If an officer is in his school, he's able to react instantly because it's not outside it happens. It's when they get in. Now, he can get to whatever location it's going to be and maybe help out. Maybe he can't, but it's a good thought to know that he can. If we have officers in Vineyard Point getting a squirrel off a tree, or up in North Branford trying to do something else, and we need the cruisers, maybe they won't be here right away. And it happens so fast, and so many people are hurt. So, my point is, if you want to at least look into it, there's a study that you can, you can, you can pay for, naturally. Nothing is free in this world. But you can pay for it. Rocky Hill just did it. They did a study, and I'm sure they're going to have answers for you. I'm not going to give you their answers because I don't really know them, but I know they did. They did a study, and they told them, yes, you better get one in there. So, here's what they got to say, and then the rest of it, we'll figure it out. If we have to, we could bring it up to a vote. The people in this town are not going to say no to that. So, that's about all I got to say. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very seriously, I think we've tried very hard to listen to and get advice from people like Chief Caravial, like others, who have got good ideas. There is no more vexing issue probably than school security right now because there are no perfect answers, obviously. We all wish that we were, that this issue was the way it was back when we were in school, and the last thing anybody had to worry about was something like this. We, but that's, doesn't seem to be at least likely to happen in the short term. So, we're going to continue to look at it, and we're going to take advice from people that have got experience and have got good ideas. And we will continue to do what we're advised, sensible and thoughtful and prudent under the circumstances is a, there's no more important issue. Any other public questions? All right. We do actually have, and there's new business, but there's not any new business, I'm sure. We actually do have a long executive session. We are currently in negotiations with three different bargaining units, the paraprofessionals and the clerical, the food service employees and the custodial. I think tonight, we're just going to get in executive session and update on the status of those negotiations. I understand that they're all three really in active negotiation right now. The, just for the record, we do have an executive session agenda item relating to Dr. Freeman's evaluation. It is that time of year. So, we need to start that process, and today, there will not be any decisions or any vote on that this evening. And then there is an issue relating to security at the high school that came to my attention, and we will talk about that in executive session as is appropriate under freedom of information. So, is there a motion that we go into executive session?
So moved. I just ask, I haven't been to one of these meetings in a little while, but communications is usually on the agenda. Is that not on the agenda?
I don't remember.
You usually don't have new business unless...
We usually have it.
Yeah, we usually have communications in there. It's missing.
I don't know how that got dropped. I know that when Ms. Fandella sent me the draft agenda, the numbers were all...
I apologize.
I mean, I just had one from a constituent, and actually, it's a concern that I think I voiced in the past, and it's just about the progress on middle school math materials. And we'd just like to, the question, the question I got from the constituent was that he didn't realize that there weren't any materials. And this is something that I've been aware of, but I know we went through a process. We just selected one for the K through five grade levels. But I was wondering about the update on the progress for materials for middle school.
For new materials.
Sure, right. I want to be careful to clarify. We don't have any new materials for middle school. The seventh and eighth grade materials that have been in place, continue to be in place, connected math is the material that we have at that grade level. There was a committee that was convened. There were materials that were reviewed. Dr. Moore mentioned to me earlier, and I can't tell you the number or the names of those materials at the moment, but I can get that information. The committee determined that there were no...
You have one minute before we run out of tape, so I would...
No materials that met our needs. We will continue the search again next school year.
And if, if somebody wants an agenda item added to the agenda, just let me know by the middle of the week before the meeting and...
Sorry, I didn't realize until...
Yeah, yeah. No, that's okay. All right, anything else? Okay, all in favor of the motion to go into executive session?
Aye.
Opposed? And we will come out of public, executive session only to adjourn. There will be no further public votes. Thank you.
We have room 29 on the corner where we do operations for the executive session because it's a bit longer, and I thought standing by the dehumidifier wouldn't, wouldn't do it.
Clustered around.
Thank you.